First of all, we have an application for Cable Bahamas which was submitted the 1st of December 2011. And that application was for an increase in price for the Super Basic TV, $30 to $38 for residential customers, and an increase for $50 to $63.50 for commercial or business customers. Sorry, we have all these cameras, you know, they have to coordinate. Here it is, you're probably wondering why ERCA is now coming to public consultation, considering that we've had this application since December 1st of 2011. ERCA in its analysis had to ensure that it would satisfy that the information presented by Cable Bahamas was sufficiently robust. Was sufficiently robust that ERCA... Please, please be respectful. Okay, because we do have technical difficulties from time to time. It's not a matter of we can afford it, okay? Please be respectful. So as I was saying, ERCA did its own analysis of Cable Bahamas' application and requested certain additional information from Cable Bahamas, which Cable Bahamas provided to ERCA. There were various meetings and interactions and discussions. So we're at this point now, and ERCA is presenting the application to you, the public, for comment. ERCA considers this consultation a matter of what we call "public significance", because it impacts many consumers. So we have a duty to consult on matters of what we call "public significance", and we consider this application to be one. Now, what did ERCA provide, sorry, what did Cable Bahamas provide to ERCA during this application process? Cable Bahamas provided its 2009 as well as its 2010 separated accounts. And I know you're wondering what are separated accounts? Everybody knows about financial statements, regular audited financial statements. But in the regulatory environment, we are operators, our licensees, who have, we call, significant market power of dominance in certain areas of markets, to provide those audited financial statements in such a way that it breaks down the actual cost of providing that service. So Cable Bahamas provided that information for 2009 as well as 2010. They also provided some actual financial figures for 2011, up to the period of August or September, and then they provided projections for the rest of 2011. We're still in 2012, so we do not have any information from them on their 2012 financial statements. What they also submitted was a benchmarking study of some 25 Caribbean countries. Those countries included English, French, Dutch-speaking, Spanish-speaking countries in the Caribbean, in the wider Caribbean. And they gave a spectrum of what those countries are charging for their, what we consider a comparable package, as well as the number of channels provided in those packages, along with the costing information. Now, I know you're wondering to some extent, but what is ERCA doing with regards to consumers as a whole? Where is ERCA with regards to initiatives that impact you, that can benefit you as consumers? An initiative that we will be coming forward with in the near future is what we call a consumer advisory council. What that is, is we check out our little public consultations, and many times...
That has been highlighted during the consultation process so far. And we thought it would be a good idea to just answer these issues or just refer to these issues now. So one of the recurring themes has been the issue of competition. People have been commenting that, you know, there is no competition. And some people have referred to a monopoly that Cable Bahamas had. A 15-year monopoly that was granted to Cable Bahamas when they first got their license to operate in the Bahamas. And we just want to clarify that the monopoly expired in 2009. Any person who wants to offer services and competition to Cable Bahamas today is free to do so by applying to ERCA for an operating license. And I see people's incredulity on their faces. It is open. Anyone who wishes to do it, and obviously is a fit and proper person, as the lawyers will tell you, but anyone can apply to ERCA for an operating license and can offer competing services. And also important is that several entities already hold operating licenses, that should they wish to do so, they are free to enter that market and compete with Cable Bahamas. So there is no monopoly anymore. Cable Bahamas may be, as we would say, the significant market provider, the SMP operator, because they obviously have a strong market position. But there is nothing preventing competition in that market. The only monopoly market remaining in the Bahamas is mobile services and SPTC. Next slide, please. One of the other issues that ERCA has been highlighting throughout the consultation process is affordability. Mr. Watson, you have mentioned it in his introduction. Cable Bahamas has an obligation to provide an affordable basic, or affordable basic television services to populated areas in the Bahamas. And while Cable Bahamas does a very good job in some of the family islands in providing a free, over-the-air six-channel service to islands where their pay-TV cable network doesn't reach, and I think it's something like 16 communities currently. That affordable six-channel package is not currently provided in the islands where their cable service exists. So the basic, Super Basic, or RFTV private service is the most affordable package, and obviously it contains six channels. The price, either now or the applied-for price, is obviously based on what you get. So there is a possibility, obviously, that a six-channel package would be cheaper. Possibility, but currently that's not provided. And a key concern for ERCA in looking at this application is, what is the impact of affordability of this $30 to $38 change? And how do we, as the regulator for the electronic communication sector, ensure that consumers' interests are protected? And we further the interest of consumers as we require to do in the communications sector? Next slide, please. And we've already had some comments on quality of service, but certainly around the consultation, we've noted a recurring theme. People complaining or making comments about the price itself, but also complaining about, or making comments about, quality of service. So we want, as ERCA, with a mandate, to further the interest of consumers, to just raise the, highlight the initiatives that we are undertaking and that we will undertake in the future to address quality of service issues beyond this consultation. And Mr. Smith has already mentioned the consumer rights and obligations, that regulations we're doing. So what we're working on is a package of rules that will set out clearly and mandate operators to provide a particular level of quality of service. Currently, there are some things, there are a few, but one rule in place. So we do monitor some metrics, or some, as we say, or rather, some measures. We look at things like time to install, time to repair, time to recover service. And we have those figures that we get from the major operators from time to time. But there is need, which we've acknowledged for more, particularly in light of the comments that we received as part of this consultation. So we will, as Mr. Smith mentioned, coming up later this year, with a comprehensive consultation on those issues, to specifically reach the public on those issues. And that, I think, just to, and I'm not going to read through these again, but this consultation is going to run until the 19th of October. Comments are requested. We will re-employ you to comment and give us information. And these are the methods by which you can submit your comments. I have nothing further, so I think we're now going, I'll just turn it back over to Mr. Watson. We've got a little made-up series. Thank you.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the, I don't know what you call it, the main course of the meeting. The floor is open to questions and comments from members of the audience. And I would like to remind you, one, we've had a number of cell phones go off, so those of you that came late, please either turn them off or put them on silent, vibrate. And insofar as others are concerned, we want you to avoid making personal attacks. And we want you to avoid making untrue, unsubstantiated, or false accusations. And please stick to the topic. All right, who's first? There's a microphone right up here in the front, behind a gentleman in a purple shirt, right in front of the cameras. We'd like to give your name, and if possible, we'd like you to give some general indication of what part of the island you're living in. So it could be the east, it could be a specific subdivision or street. It would be even up to you, but we'd like to know generally, so we have an idea of, certainly as far as quality of service issues, where the person is coming from in that particular situation. Yes, sir? May I give him the respect of hearing his question or comment?
I want to, I want to comment on a couple of things. First, the service that I get from Cable Bahamas. First, I want to cry shame on Cable Bahamas, they even come into the country and ask us for an increase. Since they've been here, I mean, in my opinion, we already paid too much.
Yes!
$15 a month, basically, because the challenges we get and the services we get, they don't deserve it, they deserve a decrease in salary. Openly, um, they, they, in my opinion, they already put a tax on us. They changed the basic cable, and they say to you, "If you want to get this basic cable, you have to come and get this box." "You have to buy this box." "If you buy this box, then you can pay, you have to pay us a substantial amount." "If you rent this box for $2 a month, then that's a tax on us already. We can't watch TV, let's eat off the box." They didn't come to you and ask you without tax. They just imposed that on us. I didn't ask them to change the system. If they change the system, they should bear the cost. I shouldn't have to pay $2 to them every, for every box I have in my house, actually $2. And then you call on them to get some assistance. Everybody tell you, "Okay, you can't forget a manager for you." But you can never get a manager. No. So what I do, I try to reach customer service manager. They say, "Sorry, we can't find one." So I say, "All right," I hang up, but I call back to the technical area. "Hey, I'm doing, I need to speak to your manager. We can't find him either, just so I can get a manager over there." I can't find one manager on the premises.
Yeah, sure, okay, so you're saying all that to say what in relation to the consultation?
I, I'm trying to say, so they do not deserve any increase what they're asking for, so. And I, "Please, don't do it."
I was kind of shocked when I was just told that Cable Bahamas has 60 channels in their basic package, because I, to be honest, enjoy that quite a bit. So I think they need to consider, instead of the obvious interest, maybe they need to consider which is seen or giving us the consumer the option. Because I only have to pay $30 for 20 or 25 channels. I don't mind doing that, because there's obviously 54 channels that I'm watching. So they need to look at their package. Because really, truly, I don't think anybody in here watches on 60.
All right, ma'am, thank you very much. Yes, sir, step right on up. Speak into the microphone, please, sir.
Good evening, my name is Derek Martin. I'm from the east of the Big The Meadows. I have a problem with, if the cable is turning off, I'm going to have to pay $20, just across the button. And also, if it's turning off, you're not paying $55, because each time you have a late payment, you charge $5. Because 5% each, but each time you have a late payment. And if it turns you off, if you miss three payments, and want to get it turned back on, you're going to pay a total of $55 or $56.
It's graceful!
And it's bad.
It's graceful!
And also, and also all you get is to say a rerun over and over and over. Sometimes I wonder if it's a pay-per-run rerun. I often wonder that the only fresh program you can watch is news or sports. Everything else, from the time Cable Bahamas came into this country, you still see the same program over and over again. And the same problems they have. And $30, and I think we're being wrong. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, speak into the microphone, please.
Good evening, my name is Lily Denise Evans. My concern with Cable Bahamas, the, and ERCA. ERCA has recently been bombarding ETC concerning the outage. What is ERCA doing with the outage of Cable Bahamas? Also with Cable Bahamas. When Cable Bahamas came into the country, they were supposed to provide a certain percentage of cable to the family islands. Can we have an update of where they are with the supplies to the family islands? Because I visited in Luton. There is a big problem in Luton. I noticed that the town meeting is not going to Luton. So the person in Luton need to have a say in that. I do not support the increase of Cable Bahamas at this time.
Hello, ma'am, I have two questions for you. When you say outages, what exactly are you referring to, please?
I, I live in the east. And recently, I have been out of cable. I have been out of internet. I was just into Cable Bahamas yesterday. I have a business, and the internet is always down.
It's graceful!
And they, they say they, they find help. At the moment, they're working on it. So what am I saying, sir? I have never watched a fun from Cable Bahamas.
The second issue you're referring to, where you're referring to, please?
I was in, from Nantucket.
That's south?
Yes. Central, central, central.
Central or central? All right. All right, ma'am, thank you.
Hi. Sorry, just before you, before you start, you start your question, I just thought it would be a very quick, you know, respond just on a couple of the points, largely to the national, as you said before. The lady, just before you discuss the issue of outages, and generally what you get when there is an outage, whether there is anything, and what the policies are. And as part of the initiatives that I, well, myself and Mrs. Smith referred to, on quality of service and on consumer rights and obligations, one of the things that ERCA is going to be looking at in the next consultation, as we mentioned, which is going to be later this year, risky once this one is finished, is what exactly are those rights and obligations? Before ERCA can enforce anything, we must put in place rules that Cable Bahamas understands this is when our obligation kicks in, whether it's an obligation, when someone mentioned refunds. What are the obligations regarding the quality of service that Cable Bahamas must provide to their customers? What the customer can reasonably expect? And when the customer has a right to complain because they have forgotten what is promised or what is required by the regulator? So that is something we are very much live to. And as, as we say, as soon as we get through this consultation, that is, that is our very next plan, is to present the public and stakeholders, both the ones we regulate and the public, with a proposal for what should those rules be. So that is something we are actively looking at. And one of the things it will include is what happens in the event of consultation.
Excuse me, what are you answering me, sir? Because I have a problem after 15 years in this country. You are just going to do that now? That's, 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 that's what I'm saying to you.
Have some quiet, please.
I'd like to say this. During the 15-year exclusivity, the PUC nor ERCA won't issue that license, nor monitor compliance and enforcement. Okay, those are the facts. Now, going forward from 2009, ERCA is now responsible for compliance and enforcement of any operator's license. So ERCA is now responsible. With regards to your comment that we're not going to Luton, we would love to go to all of the national islands. Resources are a challenge.
So how do I, please, to believe so? I don't want to take over, I don't want to take over your meeting, but if resources are a challenge, Cable Bahamas should then pay more fees to ERCA or whoever, so they can do a better job. Because it tells that since ERCA was implemented, they have done nothing according to Cable Bahamas. Should have been reviewed when ERCA came into being, and something should have been done.
Have some quiet in the room, please.
She's thin-skinned, she's very thin-skinned, yeah, you can see she goes down this side.
That's another one. Evening, my name is Dr. Gray, and I'm on the southern side of South Carolina. I'm disappointed with Cable Bahamas since they moved there about seven years ago. There's a regular outage in that particular area with the cable TV, sometimes with internet. My question is in reference to compensation and refund. If a technician, they send a schedule of technician to come to you all at a certain time, sometimes you don't get an appointment until, like, seven days, they are, eight, 10. Two weeks, sometimes, right, sometimes it's even up to two weeks. So how am I being compensated or funded? Because if I'm paying for 30 days worth of cable, television, internet, and I lose five or 10 days out of that, how am I going to be reimbursed? And I take some days to come there.
Ladies, quiet, please.
Sorry, the, the current, as, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know whether any of the gentlemen here from Cable Bahamas want to answer what their current process is. If I may, this is one of the key issues that we recognize really has to be addressed. And, you know, it is something that the, the new framework, and it is still new, notwithstanding that it's been two years, it requires, it contains many, many obligations, many documents are involved in it. And we've been consulting on one after the other for the last two years, certainly since I've been here. The obligation that you're referring to, which is the obligation to refund in the event of outages after a certain period of time, is very much a feature of most regulatory frameworks, and it is certainly one that ERCA is going to be looking at in the consultation that we will start shortly. And that's not, that is not an answer to your problem as you've dealt with it in the past. And unfortunately, I'm unable to give you that answer at this time, because fundamentally, we do have to put the rule in place first. We are, we are working on that rule, and we intend to consult on it. We have to have this sort of input for that rule as well, and that's our very next step. But it is part of one of the things, rather, that is one of the key issues, not just for cable, but for any service, that if you don't get the service that you were paying for from an electronic communication sector perspective, you should be entitled, after a reasonable period of time, to some form of, you shouldn't be paying for something you're not getting. Yes, yes. So I don't know whether anyone wants to respond as to what their current process is. But that is, that is our best time for to address that future.
Okay, the other one, you go to the lower side, please. And I hope that majority rules, if everyone is saying that they are happy, then you need to think that...
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I need to remind you, please, that there are pockets of people in the room that seem to think that they can have a conversation at a normal voice, and it doesn't affect the proceedings in the room. Actually, it does, because we're having difficulties hearing up front here. And if I'm having a problem hearing, then I'm sure that people in the back of the room are also having problems hearing. So if you want to have your own conversation, then either take it down or carry it outside, please. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Nicholas Jax. I have a few questions and also comments. But let me start by saying, I think Cable Bahamas representatives should have been... But nevertheless, the lady was introduced as an accountant, which means she has an authority on figures. And I think an $8 increase can buy at least 18 tonals. At least 13 upon me. Two? That's, that's 18 tonal I wouldn't be able to buy if I have to pay what is a increase.
This is Jax, so I'm just being facetious. I'm saying you cannot buy the eight cans of tuna. I'm the three cans of corn before the eight dollars. No, she's standing up for us.
Thank you, ma'am, the authority on figures.
I, I do, I do, I do work in front of my mandala. Are you one of those two? You don't have a work on my mouth, Luna.
My question, though. This really should be directed to cable Bahamas, because that's what we're especially are, you, you're the regulator over cable Bahamas, you should help with that. Have cable Bahamas settled that difference between the United States of America and their copyright? It's a problem that we know that because I understand that they were stealing the signal from the, the United States of America, and they were not paying copyright, uh, fees. Yet they charge enough fees, they go over the fees, and I'm not asking you to ask for this, please. Yeah, if you're being a lawyer, you need to ask that, because that's illegal.
Because I, I think, there is, there is an answer, if I could ask it to, to help us out of it. Okay, well, the, there's, there's a number of issues with that. The first issue, and I, you know, hate starting with this, but fundamentally, copyright infringement is not a matter that ERCA regulates in relation to, because copy, and I, just hear me out. Copyright, it's a civil matter between you and the person whose copyright is being stolen, and it's also a criminal matter in terms of if you infringe copyright. And now, if I could move on to the second point, and it's, there's a tribunal, obviously, that, that takes care of those matters involved. Now, if I could move on to the second point, our understanding from, from the figures that have been provided to us as part of it, of the application, is in, are included the costs that cable Bahamas incurs in relation to payments to owners of the channels that they carry. And our understanding is that, in relation to at least some portion of it, and I, I cannot speak on this again, this is a matter of cable Bahamas, let, let me, it's, we have our responsibilities, we are a creature of statute. ERCA is a creature created by a particular piece of legislation, so our responsibilities are what they are. But my understanding is that amounts are paid to the owners of copyright. Should cable Bahamas wish to answer specifically? That is, that is up to them, and, and they can approach them to.
Our understanding is that it is paid. Our understanding is that it is paid, but we are not the responsible right.
Yeah, yeah, because you're not doing a good job of defending it.
Hello, sir, sir. We're not here to defend anybody, we're here to, in full, and that is our purpose. We're not here to defend anyone.
If you're not here to defend anyone, you should shut up. Because he was defending us.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you. Have a seat.
No, I'm not finished yet, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicholas, let, let me. You are rude, dude, you are rude.
You're the one who says pay the rules, my dear, my dear respect.
No, I don't want to be shared, I said, you want to share, you should share, but you're not here to fight anybody, but you can defend it.
What's your next question, sir?
My next question is, is cable Bahamas currently making a profit with the current, uh, uh, bills we pay, or the current, you know, what do you subscribe to? Is they making a profit with the, with today's? You probably have an answer to that, that's why I said they should have better, uh, any questions.
Mr. Jax, cable Bahamas is a publicly traded company, I would say that much, therefore their information is available on their website.
Well, tell us, tell us, let's know.
You are, Mr. Jax, if I could, if I could, as part of the challenges, if I give you information that is favorable to cable Bahamas, you're going to tell me I'm defending them. I'm giving you information. Just as I was with the issue about the, the payments to, to, to the US, I'm giving you the information I have. Now, if I, if that information is favorable to them, you tell me I'm defending them. If it's unfavorable, I don't know, they may get up and walk out. But, but fundamentally, I, you have to allow us to answer fairly, and we will answer anything if it is a reasonable, any question, we'll answer to the best of our knowledge as a regulator. And, and, and I agree with the decision.
Um, but, Mrs. Smith, you, you, you said that there are some challenges financially that cause you not to be able to, to, uh, put cable in some of the family islands. You were speaking for ERCA or cable Bahamas, when you said there's some financial challenges?
With regards to what? Does that, we said, we said, because I answered in terms of the, 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 the resource.
Yes.
I didn't say financial chances and resources.
Yeah, but resolving outages?
Yes.
For you or cable Bahamas?
No, for ERCA, for ERCA.
For ERCA?
Yes, sir. You have, okay, Mr. Jax, be, be reasonable. We have above, what, twenty inhabited islands. Mr., Mr., Mr. Walker, you have a question?
All right, so thank you very much.
Anyway, uh, let me say that, uh, I vote no on any of these. Okay, because obviously, uh, you're not happy with any of that, but some other questions I may not be able to answer.
It's not a question of being unhappy with anything, sir. It's mitigated, it's a matter of being respectful and staying on topic. Yes, sir?
Thank you very much, my name is Stephen Ian Karas, I live in Maroon. First of all, I'd like to thank ERCA for allowing us the opportunity to come and express our views. We know that you are not able to. So, it's not your responsibility to regulate. From that point of view, I would like for you to keep in mind, when you're making a decision, that we as a people, to a large extent, are technologically hostages. We have no choice. We have only one cable network, one internet provider at this time, apart from a few others that are not really commercially viable. There are many persons in our community, and especially persons who may be students, and we are very concerned about that age, as you all know, who must use the internet in order to increase their ability to learn. And secondly, they have no other choice. We have, some of us are old enough to know when we use antennas. We cannot use it anymore today. Without cable Bahamas, we are technologically blind. We cannot allow it to go further. Secondly, yes, cable Bahamas buys on public admission, has made a profit. What it is, is they have public exposure, I've seen it, others may have seen it too. But the other part of the point is, since they have been here, the cost of living has increased tremendously. A large portion of our population presently is out of work. Technically, that means that many of our households can no longer afford that which we could have afforded two years ago. And, 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 I am sure that you are conscious of that because you live in this community. You don't have to send many of it, but send your money off if you're on some private business. However, I would advise the regular authority body to think carefully when that decision is made on behalf of the people who you represent. Of course, cable Bahamas is a private entity. The people of the Bahamas currently have a, the president has structured a, CEO of President Commission, uh, Commission to represent us. We ask only that you represent us fairly. I mean, thank you for listening to us, we need not to be here hostage through monopolistic rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Sands, AKA Golden Eyes. AKA Organizer. I'm here this evening to express my concern about this situation that cable Bahamas is trying to put on the Indian people, especially in the climate that we are in financially. First of all, I want to say to ERCA, I'm really disappointed that, that you do not, um, ask cable Bahamas to be on the panel, so that they can talk directly. It appears to me that ERCA is trying to answer cable Bahamas' questions. Uh, you know, this is unacceptable. Cable Bahamas wants this increase, and therefore cable Bahamas should be empowered to follow to answer the question that the Indian people asked for then. I want to say this. I think that cable Bahamas, they are asked for a twenty-seven percent increase, which amounts to thirty-eight dollars or eight dollars more. How did cable Bahamas arrive at that figure? That's, that's what I would like to know. I mean, why not maybe five percent, ten percent? How did they arrive at that figure? By eight dollars? Secondly, I would like to know, the information that was put out there, too, from ERCA, the information was said, uh, that ERCA agreed with the rates, and I sound to be correct, but it was said that ERCA agreed with it, but they have certain situations, and they want to bring this to the Indian people, so the Indian people can have an input into this. Uh, is, are we wasting our time here? Now, that was then noticed. Secondly... Well, I have nothing more, but I hope that you will bear with me. I would, when cable Bahamas initially came to Bahamas, we signed a contract to pay thirty dollars for basic cable. A few years later, when cable Bahamas, uh, implemented, implemented the digital system, you had to get your box. In other words, the contract that you promised, and you said that with this thirty dollars, I assure you, we will have basic cable now, I can't have the basic cable no more because I need the box. I think that's a legal problem, because my contract is not telling me I need a box. So, I would like to, to express my concern with that, and I would really like cable Bahamas to get involved with the, with, with my questions and to give me the answers to satisfy me. Lastly, I would like to relate to cable Bahamas offering us the basic package. I noticed recently that all of the channels now, most of them, are in Spanish. Uh, I'm, I'm an English-speaking Caribbean country, and I speak English. I don't know the problem. Now and again, they do want to, you know, have something with the Spanish in it, but, you know, I, I'm a fan of T V and, and, and stuff like that. I kind of enjoy it because I don't speak Spanish, and I don't care to learn that much of the Spanish. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, we're not getting, we're not getting value for our money. And cable Bahamas have to get a rate. Why is it that a company, eight dollars, considering the times they're in, by the time cable Bahamas understand that they have already, are already making a lot of money on the cable?
I'm going to answer some of, um, Mr. Sands' questions. In regards to how the cable Bahamas arrived at that figure, based on their posted information, as well as the benchmarking exercise, they arrive at eight dollars. Uh, what you also have to realize is price have not changed from nineteen ninety-five, and the...
Be quiet, be quiet, please. Have some quiet, all of them, please. Ladies and gentlemen, she's endeavoring to ask, answer the questions that the gentleman asked. Clara, have a seat for me, please, you've asked your questions. Have a seat, please.
Let it finish, please. I'm just presenting you with the information in the application.